Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the March 4th meeting of the Monrovia Municipality Zoning Hearing Board. If you'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to remain standing for a moment of silence. The flag is over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seen. Sharon, roll call, please.
Mr. Rosa Pell.
Here.
Mr. Grizziak.
Here.
Mr. Di Augustino.
Here.
Mr. Dice.
Here.
Mr. Walden.
Here.
Thank you. Entertain a motion on approval of the last meeting's minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move the second. It all was in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed. Under new business. Paul, if you will, please.
We have one item tonight, twenty-one-a, Elvira Lebrón. Applicant requests a special exception from Table 201A of the Monrovia zoning ordinance number fourteen forty-three as amended to operate a flooring business from a single-family residence and park two work vans in the driveway. The property is located at four oh-two Woodhaven Drive, tax parcel eight-five-five-e-dash-one-three-four in the R-two-one family residential zoning district.
Thank you. Would the applicant come forward, please? Up here, please.
On the other side.
On the other side of the microphone, by the microphone. Have you signed in yet?
Yes, I've signed in.
Okay. Would you raise your right hand, please? You swear the evidence you're about to give in this matter shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I will.
Would you state your name and spell it for the secretary, please?
Elvira Lebrón. E-L-V-I-R-A. L-E-B-R-O-N.
Thank you. Is that your case?
Uh, yes. Okay. What I run in my business is only two vans that I park in my driveway. I really don't run my business from the home because I'm a self-employed. My business working for Sherwin-Williams. At the moment, when I have the complaint, the people say a lot of cars outside in front of my house and all over. I don't control that. Anybody can park outside. Ain't no sign that say no parking. And most of the time, the cars are not mine. It's not in my business. Who are they? People can park out there. That's it.
That's all you have to tell us?
Yes.
Is there anybody else that you have that you want to testify on your behalf here tonight?
I haven't read nobody. That's my sister.
Okay, your sister. Why don't you put her name on the record so that we have it?
Okay, Felicita Lebrón.
Can you spell that?
Lebrón is L-E-B-R-O-N.
Okay. Now, just so I understand, you, it, it sounds like you're saying that there is, there are cars parking out front of your house and you say you can't control that.
I cannot control that because a lot of time is people having an activity or my neighbors. They park front of my house. Ain't nothing I can do. Even people around me, they go and, and turn in my driveway. I don't say nothing, but I don't control the street. And it's not illegal.
Do you have customers coming to your house?
No.
Who are the cars parking outside, then?
Sometimes, I don't know. It's, I got a lot of family also. If they come and park at my driveway and outside, it's legal. It's nothing illegal. They drive their car. It's legal. So, I don't know what is the complaint is about. It's not about my business because I only have two vans. One, my husband drive, and the other van is only one guy. They will come and take the van. Now, we living in a company. Sherwin-Williams, we be living one van, so we only got one.
Have you been told by residents that the parking or the cars have become a problem?
Nobody come to me and say anything. I don't even know my neighbors. I don't, they don't even speak.
Explain to me, then, why, why did you bring up the question of parking and cars?
Because when this guy came to my door and not introducing himself, and he the one told me what was going on. I didn't have no idea what was going on.
No one's ever complained to you?
No.
Okay.
Could you describe your business? How do you?
It's, it's floors. We do work for Sherwin-Williams. So, I don't even get customer. We work for the customer of Sherwin-Williams. So, nobody had to come to my house to do anything.
So, they make all their selections at Sherwin-Williams? You have no merchandise?
No, controlling nothing in my house.
Now, do you have any inventory in your garage or carpeting or tiling?
No. In my, in my garages belongs personal for her, our house, my cars. I got own two car truck and another two truck. And that's it. I parking inside the garage.
Where do your employees park?
I have only one guy that, like, when he came in, he told me. So, that he leave his car even outside on my driveway. And after he talked to me, we talked to Sherwin-Williams and they allow us now park the van in the business at Sherwin-Williams, so we don't even bring the van home. I mean, if I bring it because the weekend or we want to do something to it, I do. Other than them, I don't need to bring it to the house, one of the vans.
How many trucks do you have parked in?
Vans, working vans, only two. Own two.
Are they unmarked vans?
Like, signs outside?
Yes.
No.
Just white?
Yes, white.
Just plain white?
Just white vans.
And you never thought it was necessary to obtain permission from the municipality to have a business in the residential area?
Well, I've been having the business for a long time here. And no, like, nobody told me that I have to have it permission and special whatever, no.
How did you find out that you needed to?
Until he knock on my door. He told me the complaints.
So, you, you became aware that there were some complaints made to him?
And since I moved there, been going to five years, I always, I had to be ready my door because it was a complaint about my door. One of the neighbor was scared because the door, the door parked. Everybody else parked there and the neighbor parked. But I guess my was the only one that bother. So, we got ready at the door. My lights in front of the garage, they come automatic. When I come into the garage, it was bothering one of the neighbor. So, my husband waiting to get up. I say, no. I need that when I come late home, then my light come up.
Okay. Do you have anything else you want to tell us?
No, that's it.
Okay, Paul. Thank you. You can sit down now. And do you have anything else, any exhibits that you want to put into the record?
I've received several letters, emails, and phone calls from neighboring residents concerned about the parking on the street primarily. They were all in opposition to the parking on the street.
How many letters did you receive?
Three letters, two emails, and I did not keep track of the phone calls. About five phone calls.
So, total of five. Why don't we mark those and make them at least part of the record so that they are part of this proceeding? Now, all of these letters are from people contiguous to her property?
I don't know that they're contiguous. They all lived on Woodhaven.
Okay. And this is on Woodhaven, right?
Four oh-two Woodhaven.
And the, the primary complaint was?
Parking on the street. There's a, the house in question is very close to the intersection of Logan's Ferry and Woodhaven. And people making turns off of Logan's Ferry onto Woodhaven have a short sight distance to the rear bumper of cars that are parked on the street. So, the primary concern was one of the parked cars getting hit by somebody making a turn onto Woodhaven.
Okay. And under our ordinance, under our zoning ordinance, we have provisions for special exceptions. Is that correct?
Correct.
And under the ordinance, is there a section three oh-three-point-four-A that talks about the melding or putting together residential and non-residential uses?
Section three oh-four-point-four-A, such activity is clearly subordinate to the dwelling, does not occupy more than twenty-five percent of the floor area of one floor, does not entail internal or external alterations or construction features not customary in dwellings, and there be no external evidence of any non-residential activity. So, that last clause there is, is where we're getting hung up.
Okay. Okay. Do you have anything else you want to tell us?
No.
Okay. So, those, those letters will become part of the record. And you can get with Sharon and mark them, one through five, and we'll introduce them as part of the record here. Now, I see other people here other than the applicant. You're not here to just to pass the time. Are you here to, to give testimony in this matter? Everybody that signed in, if you have. Okay. Anybody, anybody that intends to testify, would you stand and raise your right hand? Okay. Swear them in the, in. You swear that all evidence given tonight on this subject shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Now, I note, I note that there's three people that stood, and there's about ten or eleven people here. So, only the three people that stood are going to testify, as I understand it.
Well, just if I have opinion to you, of course.
Well, just let me, let me do it, and then you can get up here and tell your side what you'd like to say. So, sir, why don't you come up first? We, we'll need your name and your address.
My name is Joe Scott.
Why don't we get up, get up to the microphone? We do things really big time here.
Okay. My name is Joe.
Move over to right here. There you go.
My name is Joe Scott.
Oh, he wants you at the other microphone. We're sorry.
He's good there.
No, that's good.
Right there? Sorry.
I didn't want to.
Just start talking. We, we hear you.
I live at four oh-one Woodhaven Drive. My wife lives there. The property's in my name, but we own it together. Okay? We moved, we bought the property to retire there. We would like to have our piece of quiet enjoyment. I think that boundary has been pushed a lot last summer. Okay? There is a big concern about people coming into the driveway or coming in on Woodhaven off of Logan Ferry because the traffic gets backed up and then the horns start blowing. You know what I mean? And noise, horn noise is a big issue for me. You know what I mean? So, I'm cutting the grass. I don't know if somebody's blowing at me, barking at me if I'm doing something wrong. There's a lot of people that walk and take their pets up and down the street. You know what I mean? And they have to jump onto my property because of flow of traffic.
Well, I, I don't want to hear about traffic in general. I want to know what you, what you know about this particular residence as it pertains to parking and traffic.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm opposed to the zoning proposition. Okay? And how, what I feel about it, or I'm not sure?
What do you see? What do you hear?
Well, I mean, last.
Let me finish.
Okay.
That pertains to this piece of property.
Well, what I don't like about this thing is I look out my window last summer and last fall, and all I see is a whole driveway that appears to be mostly U-Haul rental vehicles. I mean, that could change. I understand that. But aesthetically, what does that do for my property value?
How many days a week did you see that?
Quite a few. I mean, I was, we moved in last fall. We had ruined the property since two thousand and seven. And then we were kind of busy, but, you know, I'm just talking about the occurrences I experienced.
And how long, how long during the day would they stay there?
Well, it would, I don't know. I see them coming in, you know.
So, was it morning, noon, and night?
What do you think, Lynn?
Well, no, I want to know what you think.
Well, I mean, I'm not always there.
Well, when you were there?
Well, I've seen them. They looked like they were parked there better part of the evening. I don't know where they went. I mean, you know.
Did you see them during the morning?
Um, yes.
Okay.
So, you're saying U-Haul trucks or?
Yeah, it looks like it rentals. I mean, you know, rentals. I mean, I, I can understand that that could all change. But aesthetically, what does that do for our property value? Do you know what I mean? I mean, at some point, we might have to sell and, you know, that proceeds might have to pay for us for assisted living and things and whatnot. I mean, you know.
Where is your house in relation?
Directly across the street. And the parking on the street is a lot of challenges for me, too, because I have a hard time getting in the driveway. It seems like people park, park, double park, 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 park. And then, you know, I, like, coming home tonight, I had to navigate and go around the back way, pull, pull around somebody and back up into the driveway. And somebody's behind me blowing a horn and blowing a horn. I have several occurrences where I'm pulling back into the driveway. The parking constraints were an issue, and people were swearing and using foul language at me. I'm a patient person, but I have my limits of, you know, tolerance, you know, that I should, you know, have to endure for living in a residential neighborhood.
Okay.
And there is a lot of traffic. It appears to be a lot of traffic going in and out of there, a lot of loading noises and things.
Out of the house?
Yeah, right.
You see loading and unloading?
Well, I hear it. I hear the commotion. I hear, you know what I mean? So, I mean, I don't know if it's just, I don't understand why they need two work vans if it's him and another one. I guess what would stop them from having a dozen people show up at their house and get in his vans and take off?
Okay. And you mentioned your wife. Is she here?
Yes, she's here.
What's her name for the record?
Linda.
Okay. Do we have any questions of this witness? Okay, thank you. It was the second person that put their hand up.
This one? This microphone? Over here.
Name and address, please.
Uh-huh. My name is Diane Staub, and I live at four oh-seven Woodhaven Drive.
That's your spire, last name?
And I live on the opposite side of the street, several houses up. And I've lived there for thirty years with my husband and our daughter. And she, a few years ago, moved back from college, and she lives there with us. So, recently, I retired. I work shifts. And I've, you know, go to work sometime. I leave at five fifteen in the morning. Sometime, I don't, I wouldn't leave till seven thirty. Sometimes, I leave for the afternoon shift to start. I come home at twelve, twelve-thirty in the evening. So, recently, I did retire, which I'm very happy about because the traffic, the parking is what my biggest concern is. Because I, I guess because I work in a hospital, I'm always concerned about emergency vehicles coming up the street. And as was already said, whenever you're turning from Logan's Ferry onto Woodhaven, it's a very short span before boom, there's a car. There's another car. There's two more cars. I don't care what they park in their driveway. They can park. I mean, it's their driveway. But these vehicles are there a lot. I mean, they're there a lot, I mean, all the time.
Just so we understand, is this parking around the residents we're talking about?
Mm-hmm. But it's some.
You have to say yes or no?
Yes.
I go on or?
Yes, yes, okay. So, sometimes I, I would come home and, and, you know, the roads are a little bit skittish, and you're swinging back and forth because it's just a slight grade to come up. I thought, if I hit one of these cars, it's going to be my fault. And they're always, always there. And, I mean, I don't see it every minute of every day, but it's a lot of traffic there. So, my concern is fire trucks, ambulances. I always think, I hope to God, there is no major issue here because if everyone in the neighborhood thought, well, I'm going to have two cars parked here, and there's two here, and there's three there, and one there, and one there, you would be weaving in and out, like zigzagging, to get up the street. How could emergency vehicles do it? It, it just is not a good situation. I'm on the opposite side of the street. I don't see directly into their garage. I can't say what's there, but I just know that there is a lot of traffic going in and out of the house. And this is what really brought it to my attention because it's gotten worse. We know, it seemed like a couple of years ago, maybe it was there, but maybe I just didn't notice it. Neighbors that live up on Franklin Heights, neighbors that live up on Woodhe, I mean, um, yeah, the upper part of Woodhaven, Revere, Colonial, they would stop me and say, you live at that part of Woodhaven, don't you? What's going on in that house? They said, I don't know. New neighbors. Looks like they have some business going on. I don't know. They go, well, how many cars do they have to have there? I don't know. I don't know the people. You know, I'm busy.
Okay. Are you here with anybody?
Yeah, my husband, Raymond.
Okay. What's his name?
Raymond.
Okay. You've never talked to the, the lady that testified tonight?
No. I never even really knew who she was. I never saw her outside. I never saw her outside. May, maybe I did, but I didn't know it was her.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, no. That's my biggest concern about emergency vehicles. Oh, the only other comment I want to make is, like, all of us in the neighborhood, we have to be considerate of the other neighbors. It's just, that's just how it is. And I know that anybody can park in the street, but when there's always one location that has all of that, it just seems not considerate.
Do you think assault truck could get through there without any problems?
They probably have because the people on the other side, the couple, the couple that's here today, they don't park in the street right there, and neither do the people next to them, and neither do the people in the third house and going up. They don't park there. So, assault truck can get through.
Thank you.
So, is it isolated to this section of Woodhaven that we have the parking issue or the navigation on the road issue? Other places we?
The mall, well, no, there are other neighbors that, but they're not there, they're not there all the time. Maybe one lady is because she visits her family, you know, her daughter. But it just seems to be a lot right there.
How many cars would you say, on average, you, you say?
Well, over the last year, my daughter leaves early for work, and she says, Mom, I could barely get by. She said, there was like, like, four, four or five cars in the street and in the, in the driveway. And she said, I was afraid I was going to hit somebody. And I said, well, just take your time. You know, you just have to get through and get out onto Logan's Ferry. And I think it's just the location of it. Right there, you, people coming down, people coming up. I've seen, there's a bus stop there. I'm surprised the buses get up. I've seen them, they come up. And the other thing is, um, the, the people, like, fam, mothers want to pick their child up at the bus stop. Nowadays, everybody wants to watch their child get off the bus and get them. They used to be able to park down by, not by the very corner house, the couple that's here, but the next house. They'd park there. The kids get off the bus. They get in the car. They go back up. But now, they park up the street more. They can't, they can't be on that side of the street, have all these cars on this side of the street.
Is the parking situation, is it Monday through Friday or is it seven days a week that you've noticed?
I've noticed it every day. And I can't say, like, like I said, I can't, I'm not there at my window. I do, I just recently retired. I do a lot of things at my church. I'm, I'm in and out all the time. I'm an active retired person, but I'm in and out all the time. And, you know, I just, I'm just very concerned about, there was a fire recently down below, and it's not just one fire truck shows up. Two fire trucks have to come. You know, the police corps has to come. I mean, that's my big concern because I worked in a hospital, and I know how every minute counts.
Any other?
No, that's it.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Want to sign? Did you already sign in?
My name is George Darden. My wife, Eileen Darden. We live at forty thirty-one Logan Ferry Road. I can look out my back door and see all the things, but I've never had any problems with the people. I've come around there. I've never had any problems. The only thing I've ever heard was the pizza guy when he comes up the street making his loud noise and down the street shifting. And that's all I really wanted to say. Because they seem like good people. I've been over their house twice. Dropped off some donuts when they first got there. But I've, I've seen no problems. I've had no problems going around there, up the hill. Even when I had my motor, when I had my motorhome, I had no problems.
Could you spell your name for me, sir?
Darden. D as in David. A-R-D-E-N.
Thank you.
Joe, do you have that Google photograph? Can you put it up for us? I don't think he has the Google.
Okay. I got about three of them, so I'll. The one that has the address.
Paul's going to put it on the board.
Okay. He'll just put it on the board, then.
One you're looking for?
No, no. Paul's going to put it on the board.
Lose the aerial view.
I'd like you to look at this photograph, sir.
Oh.
Kind of like, show me, show us where your home is. Wait, wait he gets it on the board. Hold on a second.
There's a camera above you that's going to put it on the monitor. So, everybody's going to see the same thing. He's going to zoom in. Give me a second.
He'll blow that up for a better view. Okay. Roughly, you see where their home is? Right in the middle there, has a red dot?
Yes.
Where would your house be?
This is Logan Ferry.
Yes. This is my house here.
Okay.
Okay. With the driveway, first driveway on the right.
Yeah. And your dri, and your driveway goes out onto, you're right on Logan's Ferry Road.
Yeah. But I, my backyard, I can look straight across at their house.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anybody else that's here that didn't sign up that would like to make a statement? Going once, twice, third time?
Can I ask something?
Sure. Come back up, please.
Can I speak?
Go ahead.
The day that I came to speak to him, I showed him a video that my grandchild's wife, same, her mother sent it to me. It was like eight night cars. I showed him the video. None of them was at my house. It was an activity for the right-sized neighbors. They have an activity. And they was even parking my garage almost, but I didn't complain. And you know why? Since I moved there, uh, these people not even speak. I don't even know them. They ain't even, I didn't even see their face. They don't even say hello, but they got time to complain. This gentleman, the first speak, he go on my driveway and turn all the time. I never say nothing to him because he's not killing me with that, but they have an issue with me for anything I did not do my house. And like I said, I got a big family. And like, in the summer, I did a few activity. My grandson graduate, went to the, he's in the Marines. And we did a few parties at my house early in time. Decent time they finish, and a lot of people came because that, nobody going to take it from me. I pay my taxes. I pay my dues, and I live in my house. I don't bother anybody. But these people don't work with me. I think they don't like it, who I am. That's too bad. Because I live here and I pay dues just like they do. I don't bother them. They need, they stop bothering me for anything they pick, whatever. And that's, I'm getting tired of it. At first, I thought about sell the house and move. It looked like, we're not welcome here in Monrovia. But no, I'm not doing that. I'm not giving the place. The place should they do that because I pay my dues like everybody do. And they need to quit picking because everybody parking the street is not coming to my house. These people, only got one driver that come. So, these people, I don't know who they are half of the time. And they friend of mine or family, and they park outside. They legally can park in this outside. If they know how to drive, get on your driveway. But they need to stop getting in mine because it's an issue about it. I don't bother nobody. They need it. Just leave me alone. Because I see where they coming from. They just don't like who I am. That's too bad. I can't change it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to ask something.
Want to come back up here, please?
I don't pull into anybody's driveway. If you took an aerial photograph and looked at the two driveways, they're parallel. If there's two cars parked on the street, I, I can't swing into my driveway without driving over on the grass considerably. I pull up and I pull towards their driveway, but I don't pull into their driveway, and I back in. I back in because I have a back and neck injury. It affects my motion trying to back out in the morning. I leave at four thirty, quarter to five in the morning. So, I don't pull into anybody's driveway. And I, people see me do that time and time again. People constantly double park across their driveway, and they see me doing that. And it's never having anybody come out and say, move your car. We don't want you to interrupt the neighbors. Do you know what I mean? It doesn't seem to be, it seems like we're left to do the police work in our own neighborhood. You know what I mean? And there's a one neighbor says, you know, we need to be considerate of everybody else in the neighborhood. You know what I mean? I mean. I mean, I, and I'm afraid, when I had the driveway put in, I couldn't cut it anymore to go that way or I wouldn't be able to stay on the driveway. I said, how about putting bubbles in it? How about stamping it? How about, you know, a scar in it? And they said it'll fill because the water will come down and you won't be able to stay on the road. So I'm really at a limitation there. Then as everybody complains about the parking, you know, that makes it even more difficult for me. As I explained before, I'm trying to navigate to get back into my driveway and people were frustrated coming up the street screaming at me. I'm not, they're screaming obscenities at me. You know what I mean? And I get the frustration, but it's not my fault. You know what I mean? I said, I just want to add to that, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a rare ten-minute. You want to come up?
Yeah, I, I didn't plan on speaking, but I think I, I-
I knew that that would start.
Need to ask if you, what's that?
See what happens when you get up a second time?
So-
Sign in for us, right?
My name's, uh, Richard Buckster. I live up the street, four sixteen Woodhaven Drive. Um, I guess my question is, and I understand the parking, everybody parks on the street. I don't like the people parking on the street. I park in my driveway. Unfortunately, they have a, a garage that's in front of their house. Fortunately for me, mine's in the back of my house, so I have a bigger driveway maybe than they have. I didn't come here to, to pick on anybody or, or, or anything like that. I think that's kind of the issue is the, the parking on the street. When people try to get out of their, uh, driveways and somebody's parked on the other side of the street, you have a chance of, of hitting them and, uh, then it is your issue now because it's your, your fault. Um, my question is, and, and why I came, is because of the, uh, business sense of the whole matter. Is what happens if we allow a business to survive in our neighborhood? What happen, what kind of precedence do we set for the, uh, future? What's to say that their next door neighbor can't come or the, the folks across the street come and want to put a business in? I didn't move there to, for a business sense. I moved there for a residential nature. And that, I just want to ensure that whether they have a business in their house, I just want to ensure that we're not setting a precedence for more businesses to move in. So Mr. Dice, maybe you could answer that question? Uh, do we set it, do we set a precedence for, for that if we allow somebody to come in and operate a home business?
Well, I think you know the answer to that. I think sure you do. I mean, if there's another home business next door and another and another, where, where does it all end? Uh, remember, the language is, this neighborhood is supposed to be, stay residential, not non-residential. And non-residential activities in a residential area under our ordinances are not permitted. And it, and if it's parking cars for customers, parking cars for employees, then that becomes non-residential in nature. And if that's the case, you violate the terms of the ordinance. If however, the board chooses to say, all right, employees and, and, and customers have to park somewhere else, then maybe you, maybe you bring about, um, some, some resolution to the matter. But I think that's, the board's going to have to wrestle with that.
Uh, you know, I, I can say this, that I've never seen the white vans out there. They do park them and keep them in the driveway, but there is associated parking with that. And I think the young lady alluded to as well. There are other people that park. It's not just her cars and her family, but there's neighbors that park there that have whatever types of events they have at their house, card club or something like that. Obviously, people do do that. I think it's the habitual nature possibly of the parking, you know, day after day that that happens and that's maybe causes the issue. I just maybe had a suggestion, just listening to what people have said tonight. Um, she said that she works for Sherman Williams. I guess they park a van up there. Could, could they not park their van up there and then have the people meet there or whatever? And if she can still do the business out of her house, she, if she does the bookkeeping or whatever nature that is, because she said she doesn't have any, uh, people that actually come to the house to do the business, she's just a contractor probably for Sherman Williams, is what I'm getting out of the matter. So I thought if you have a van there, maybe you can put the other van there or something and have the folks meet up there?
We understand your point.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Nobody's really expressed a, a, an issue with the business as such, as far as them seeing, uh, customers coming to the house, deliveries of, uh, rolls of carpeting or tiling or stuff like that. It seems to be strictly the parking or the precedent setting for what this may happen or what may cause another, uh, business to move in to the neighborhood, to a residential area. So if, if there were a way to eliminate the visuals of a business being there and maybe dealing somewhat with a parking issue, somebody said maybe we could come to a compromise, but I think we need to talk about it.
Okay, on that point, uh, we're now going to take a ten-minute recess. We'll be back here in ten minutes.
The reason for the recess is to deliberate on this matter.
Okay. We'll be adjourned for ten minutes.
Might be twenty.